Education meeting. Roll call, please.
Bad.
Here.
Palaj.
Here.
Good. Shlaiha. Here. Stuki.
Here.
1.1, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 1.2, we got the adoption of the agenda. You have a motion?
So.
Seven.
Eight. Roll call.
Bad.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Shlaiha.
Yes.
Stuki.
Yes.
And I need a motion for the approval of the March 12th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Bad.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Shlaiha.
Yes.
Stuki.
Yes.
Okay, next we have 2.0 is public participation and introduction of guests. 2.1, Shannon, is Montgomery County Educational Service Center Business Advisory Council. We have a joint statement of work presentation from Shannon Cox and Brian Stewart. Welcome. If you'd like to just introduce them.
That's okay, I was going to, but you did a beautiful job.
I do have your part reading my script. So anything else you'd like to say?
Not really. Without further ado, Shannon Cox and Brian Stewart.
Sorry, Bad.
Not a problem, you did great.
We got here, here, here.
All right. Well, thank you for having us this evening. And we want to start off by just saying that we're very appreciative of the fact that Spring Grove chooses to be part of the joint business advisory council between Montgomery County ESC and Warren County ESC. So I am Shannon Cox, I'm the superintendent at Montgomery County ESC. But I have to say that I've been there 16 years and the job I held before that was right here in Springfield. So it was my, I'm going to say honor to close down Jonathan Wright. But I appreciated the fact that I was allowed to bring that piece of history for Spring Grove to a close and move over to Clear Creek for a few weeks before moving on to the ESC. Right?
My name's Brian Stewart, I'm the workforce director here at Montgomery County ESC. For the last six years, I've had the privilege of working with your district and even some people more. And just really excited to talk with you all today about something that we're really passionate about. And we are, thank you all, you're doing a great job and participating in it. And also, just, I know this is going to be like a lot from her and I. Usually, though, with these presentations, we have industry members and high red partners and nonprofit partners and members of the military. So this is a picture from our annual dinner. We understand that you had a meeting at the same time as that. Apologies, 23 districts, it's hard to find the right date, so apologies there. But we're going to hear to hopefully represent many of the voices that were represented at that annual dinner. And then if you look in front of you, there's a folder. So we've got A slides, if you're note takers like myself, if you want to jot any questions or any thoughts down on this, I will get those answers to you. But inside that folder, you're going to see the Learn to Earn Dayton Annual Report, which is chock full of really high quality regional data. You're going to see our Business Advisory Council's policy agenda, which spells out all different types of policy recommendations that our region is kind of putting forward for the community. And then in a very important highlight is you also have a packet of UScience data. This is a tool that I believe your district is pretty aware of, I know you guys administer it as well. But this is for our region. So in many instances, some of the charts you see in that UScience packet, it's going to have over 10,000 active sixth through 12th graders. Now, you might ask, is your data in that packet? Not yet, we're working with your team to get your data into this packet. But we have found that it's very, it's a really useful resource when talking to employers and industry partners. And then the last piece is the Joint Statement of Work, which is what we're here to talk with you all about today.
Okay, so we're going to dig into the Joint Statement of Work. But before we do that, I want to make sure it's very clear that we know that your meeting didn't need to be longer and we actually had other things to do tonight. But it is required by law that once a year, the Board of Education of every public school district who belongs to a Business Advisory Council, which is all of them, have an annual update. And so because you were not able to come to the dinner, and I'm sorry we didn't buy pizza tonight. Because you didn't come to the dinner, we're coming here to satisfy that. So after tonight's meeting, you will be in compliance and so all will be good in the world. But as many of you may already know, there are a couple of mandates that we're working under. The first one is actually the Career Connections mandate. The Career Connections mandate was actually the first mandate that came out that started really paving the way to embed workforce development into school days. It is an unfunded mandate, I will say that very clearly, it is an unfunded mandate. But basically, the mandate came out and said, you must embed career connections into the everyday materials and the standards. And to be helpful, the Department of Education tried to put out model curricula that would allow you to do that in an easy fashion. The example I love to give because it illustrates exactly how hard they tried, but how far they missed it, was a fourth grade lesson that basically, it was a math lesson, and it said, please use paper clips for this lesson because people who work in offices use paper clips. We just thought we could do better. We thought we could do better than that. But it is, again, the attempt to make certain that young people really do understand the opportunities that they have and why they're learning the quadratic formula, like putting that, what, angel of a question to bed. The second mandate is obviously the Business Advisory Council mandate. And that is that every public school district has to belong to a Business Advisory Council. They can do it independently at their own district, or they can do it as a consortium as part of a JBSD or an ESC. Warren County ESC was going to hold their own Business Advisory Council Consortium. We obviously worked really well together in southwest Ohio, all of the ESCs are very collegial. And Tom Isaacs just said, listen, why don't we just do this together? And so we opened it up to the 23 districts that align to both Warren County ESC and Montgomery County ESC. Again, that is also an unfunded mandate, so Brian is underwritten by the Montgomery County ESC. I'd like to remind you of that, if you don't think it's, but he works really hard to make certain that the 23 districts have the resources they need to be able to satisfy the mandate, but also helps me co-lead the efforts so that we are seen as, as a, not just a Business Advisory Council that meets the compliance of the law, we understand that that's really important, again, that's why we're here tonight, but also to meet the spirit of the law. Because we do believe wholeheartedly that our students will be better off and our communities will be better off if we meet the spirit of the law. The other thing that the state of Ohio has done, because, again, I'm sure you're well aware of it, just to name it because it's connective tissue, is just recently, you know, we now have the Department of Education and workforce. And so there are two deputy director positions, one for CTE and one for primary and secondary education. And one of the things that we've been advocating for is to make certain that we don't go back to an us and them, the college kids and the workforce kids. We do, we work too hard to remove that stigma because we all know that the whole point of college in the first place is to have an occupation or a career progression or a career journey that allows you to have a living wage income and be a viable community member in all of our communities. To help do that, they also implemented an application for an award because what makes people work harder is if you compete, I guess. I mean, that seems to be the mindset. But I would like to, again, just remind everyone that for the last two years prior to 2025, we have been rated a four star, out of four star Business Advisory Council. And that's something we take great pride in, but it's also because this man works really hard to make sure that that happens. And this year, we get to announce that we are, for three years in a row, Business Advisory Council. Dinner, I made a joke, like, what is, what is the difference between Brian Stewart and Patrick Mahomes? Brian knows how to three-peat.
We know how to three-peat. We know how to three-peat.
But we usually be very proud of the work that your district is doing because it's part of that, that you feed into the metrics that allow us to claim a four star, out of a four star award, again, for the 2025 school year. And we were awarded excellence in those three badges, if you will.
And then, just because there's Business Advisory Councils all over the state and you're part of this one, we wanted to highlight why we believe we continue to get the top rate Business Advisory Council in the state. Many of the things I'm about to touch on really quick, you all are doing in your own respect, one of which is instead of individually tracking down individual advanced manufacturing companies, we work within industry groups. We work with the Dayton Regional Manufacturers Association. So instead of trying to memorize every single HR person in a sector, we work through their industry group. Or instead of working with just Premier, or just Kettering, or just Dayton Children's, we work with the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association. So this is a unique approach to employer engagement, that's what that industry group collaboration means. A major piece to this is elevating student voice. At the end of the day, the things and the systems that we're building are about students. So making sure that we're doing listening sessions, that we're actually asking students for their perspective on the topics and things that we're attacking through our Business Advisory Council. And we do that in various ways. We even employ high school students in the summer to look at the documents that you're seeing today and help strengthen them. And they have very creative input, is a short way of putting it. Another way that we are very different from the rest of the state is oftentimes when you think about workforce development and career connections, that's usually kind of living in the high school space. Our Business Advisory Council means very early into the K5 space. We believe that if we can educate students early, that we can inspire them to want to go into many of the in-demand sectors that require a STEM background. Touched on it a little bit earlier, but just leveraging assessments that don't just tell us what students are interested in, but what they're actually have an aptitude in. So the fact that our region uses UScience is a huge X factor. Then the last piece, which you have a packet in front of you from Learn to Earn Dayton, is how we leverage regional education data. It's not just about what's going on in Spring Grove, it's not just about what's going on in Centerville or Oakville or Troy or wherever, it's about what's going on in southwest Ohio and where are the larger trends emerging out of the demographics that we're working with, sir.
And that regional data, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
No, and I just want to pause and say, like, we're about to deep dive, but this work does not happen without the people in this room and the leadership of your school district. There are so many companies and volunteers and mentors and nonprofits based out of the geography that we're in right now that represent Spring Grove, that are part of our Business Advisory Council. So just a major thank you, I know that we got the four stars, but it's really an effect of all the work that's going on in a district like Spring Grove.
And as Brian mentioned, the data that is in front of you, oh, because now I'm double clicking, I'm just sorry. The data that's in front of you, Learn to Earn Dayton has been our nonprofit critical career partner for decades. And they actually started collecting that data, obviously, since Bad has been very intimately involved in the early childhood portion of what now is preschool promise, but it was actually sort of birthed out of Learn to Earn and the Learn to Earn data collection. Carrie and I have been working on setting up National Student Clearinghouse portals for Spring Grove so that you can actually look at your longitudinal data and see what your graduates are doing six years post-high school because that has an implication, again, of how healthy your community is and really the work that we're doing in middle schools and high schools. All of that to say, the data is really important, but we set a benchmark several decades ago, shouldn't say several, two decades ago, that said, we really need to make sure that 60% of our working age population has a living wage income. If we can do that, there is national data around thriving communities and making certain that we have more economic development and workforce development happening than we do have social services happening. Because we all know the stats on that. So that 60% has been sort of the North Star for us, even before Business Advisory Councils were mandated. Because of that, these are the indicators that Learn to Earn Dayton, and then subsequently then Montgomery County ESC, and now the Business Advisory Council, these are the indicators that we track. We know there is research behind it, we have proven the research, we actually have local research, that kindergarten readiness is directly related to third grade reading scores, which is directly related to high school graduation. We know that eighth grade math scores are directly related to college attainment six years post-high school. We've got the throughput, we've got the data. So it's really important that we continue to measure these because, again, we know what measure gets stuff.
This is one of the things that I think is unique to our community. We're very intentional over what in-demand sectors we lean into. I'm not going to make you guess, don't worry, I'm going to spout it out with a great clip art here. But we have, obviously, in southwest Ohio, we have a lot of careers and opportunities in healthcare and advanced manufacturing, and business services, and skilled trades, and IT and computer science, and logistics, and aerospace, and that's what the data tells us, unique to southwest Ohio. But what we believe as a Business Advisory Council is that leaning into law enforcement and public safety is also very important, leaning into education, particularly early childhood education careers is very important. And then, similar to IT, because we all know that in all of these sectors, there's roles in IT, there's another subset of in-demand sector that we're really looking at, which is just how we talk about entrepreneurship, and how does entrepreneurship overlay into all that we do. So like I alluded to earlier, these are the partners, these are the partners of our Business Advisory Council, these are the different industry groups that we work with, many of you are probably familiar with them. But for each of those in-demand sectors, we are working through one of our industry groups.
Okay, so the nitty-gritty, you have a plan in front of you, the Joint Statement of Work in front of you. So these slides are really only going to highlight the accomplishments. Because, again, legislatively, the dates are kind of wonky. These plans are due September 30th, even though the work starts at the beginning of the school year. They gave us grace, I guess, to turn in a plan by September 30th. But then the Joint Statements of Work are due by March, the 1st of March. And so it really doesn't give a whole lot of time to say, and this is what we've done. So we really have tried to look at this from a year-to-year perspective and not just a year-by-year perspective.
So we're going to speed run through these six subcommittees that we have. And as you can see here, our co-chairs for this subcommittee represent both industry and schools with Tommy Renfro from Ship Construction to Colwell from Kettering Schools. But one of the things that we're really proud of is a thing that we call Career Champions and Counselors. This is something that we take, all across the region, we have counselors, curriculum directors, even sometimes building leadership, go out and do site visits, so if you want to do the next slide for me. You can see we've taken them this school year so far to places like public health, to learn about all the careers in public health, and to learn about just the various ways that you can make a real living working for the county. We've also gone to one of our major, I'm going to call it a marketing firm that doesn't really do them justice, they acted. This is, again, a room full of educators, counselors, building leaders, curriculum directors, online yards, getting to meet firsthand in person with a private company, learning about what they do in that sector. Then our third site visit was to Dayton Children's, this was a particularly catalytic event because they got a whole panel, I think the next slide, of different jobs you would never think of going into, different careers you would never think of going to into in the healthcare space. And our region's counselors got to pick their brains over what degrees did they get, what credentials, what certifications, and how did they get into that career. So these are just three examples, and then a slide of many of the companies we have visited in the past. We plan on continuing this initiative. If you have any great Spring Grove partners that you think you might want to take our region's counselors to, please don't hesitate to recommend some partners, but we try to have them be in the different in-demand sectors in our region. But most recently, we just took about 40 counselors up to the Dayton Airport where there is an Energizer facility where they actually mix 50% of this country's armor all carwipes. So, again, just trying to show people the different careers and logistics and opportunities like that. We also survey all of our partner districts, so people like Beth get inundated with surveys and requests from me asking how many PDs your district hold that have to do with things like career connections. So this is, again, a halfway mark of the school year. We've had about 150 Professional Development Act trainings offered across all 23 districts and about 1,800 educators impacted by those opportunities. We're one out of six, we're going to keep sprinting, I promise, I know it's late. Okay, so our next subcommittee is Policy and Amnesty and Chance Committee.
So this was a committee that was out just a couple of years ago. In your quarters, you should have the policy agenda. We work really hard to work with people who are already in that space. So we work with the Chamber of Commerce, that obviously is a multi-county chamber, Rick Wegman, who is Goodwill Easterfields, and also Dr. Tom Lasley, who is obviously very well-known at the state level. So, again, you can, you can read the bullets yourself. So we have set up an actual, that slide is missing. We have set up an actual policy agenda that we have worked to leverage and lobby for across the state of Ohio. It's also, we're going to skip that. There it is.
I stapled this one out, however, hopefully not all of yours. Apologies, sorry. Another major thing that we want to highlight is, not only in the Policy and Amnesty Subcommittee, do we have members of the legislature actually participating in that Subcommittee, where we have their ear, talk to them about some of the issues that are arising in our schools and opportunities, some of the issues. We also incorporate student voice. So earlier this school year, we brought students from around the region to go to the State House and meet one-on-one with our legislature to talk about issues that are important to them.
And we will offer this student opportunity to the Warren County members of the Business Advisory Council for next year as well.
Which is new and exciting, and we can't wait to work with you to get both a junior and a senior to represent your district and come with us to the State House and talk with those members of the legislature. Our next subcommittee is arguably one of the most important, they're all important, but we have to have industry partners at the table, is after all, the Business Advisory Council. So we have over 337 industry partners providing direct support to districts. Where does that number come from? I ask people like Beth, what companies is your district partnered with? And then I look at all 23 districts and I remove all the duplicates, and those are the companies as of January. And then the next thing is, one of the things that this thing is really, really focused on is how many students are in work-based learning. So free apprenticeship and apprenticeship or an internship. So that last slide showed you that we have about 2,000 students as of January that are in a paid work-based learning or unpaid apprenticeship or internship. So for our region, that's actually pretty good. I also want to highlight that in-demand jobs, we, this is right around the corner, and our industry Subcommittee has really helped pioneer a cadence with our schools so that every October, many of you probably are aware, that's Manufacturing Month, we've tried to replicate the success of that with other sectors as well. There we go. This is where you all kind of fit into it. So the Warren County ESC has a Subcommittee, they meet pretty regularly, I think they now have actually four meetings. And one thing I have to give kudos to when we're in another county, Warren County rolls deep. And at these Subcommittee meetings, every Warren County School District has like two or three people represented and just the coordination and, I think you used the word collegial earlier, but you guys really work well together. And I just want to highlight on your Subcommittee, the Warren County Subcommittee, there's some of the meetings that have already taken place in October and December and February. I'll let you read through that if you're on leisure. But this is kind of what it looks like, this is what a Business Advisory Council is. It's not just, you know, us presenting, it's the collision of ideas, industry, higher ed, and military and nonprofits working together. And then our next Subcommittee is called Parent and Community Engagement. Two metrics that are very important to us over the last couple of years, this is from the community, this is not the ESC, this is not one of our districts, this is what this Subcommittee's leaders, who actually make up, are made up of parents and community groups, they said that we as a region need to do a better job of highlighting alumni. We all know that there are rock star people that came through our school districts that are now in really interesting careers. How do we tell their story back to students? And one of the things that we've heard overwhelmingly from students is that they respect, unfortunately for me and many others, very near peers, very, very near peers, not just anybody. So we're really focused on near peers and recent alumni. Then the other piece, just one more back real quick, is just the idea of making sure that when we have incredible opportunities, we're offering to students that we're being mindful about how that messaging is approachable and easy to understand for parents and guardians. And that's just kind of one of the continued themes of the Business Advisory Council this year, is all of our districts and all of our partners are making incredible opportunities for students to participate in. We're just trying to break through that barrier because we know parents are inundated with resources on how we can use language that's actually going to galvanize them to participate.
Okay, so our last subgroup there is student engagement. Again, you can see the four major accomplishments that we highlighted to the Department of Education and workforce. But these, these numbers are just really big and they're getting bigger every year. So the fact that we have 23 partner schools hosting just under 1,500 career exploration experiences, that's 1,500 experiences that, again, show a future to a student. We also have had 12 partner districts that have hosted career fairs. Career fairs usually happen the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and it was kind of like, hey, you know, who do we know that we, that we can bring in and give something that's engaging? Now we're actually being pretty critical about who is being brought into those career fairs and does it match with that alignment to what the workforce needs are? Because we want to make sure that, again, kids know what the opportunities are.
And I just want to use one example of when we, when we're tracking what career fairs are taking place. Many of you might be familiar with that event called the Construction Career Expo or the She Dig event that takes place around, pretty close to here, actually, where we have over 1,000 students from like dozens of school districts go to a construction site or an apprenticeship training ground and actually get heavy machinery, actually use tools, and we're trying to be way more intentional about this. But I just wanted to put a face to what this actually looks like. So I tried so hard to dig up some Spring Grove photos this afternoon, I failed you, I'm sorry. But I know you all are participating in this work, but if you just want to keep advancing the slides, these are just examples of what these types of career fairs actually look like. Sometimes they even involve hands-on activities like you see in these photos. We just believe that this is how you get students excited about some of these in-demand careers.
And the last thing that I'll say about the career experiences and, you know, the career adventure days that we hold, because we now have that UScience data, we can actually target who we invite to some of these experiences. So if they've got a natural aptitude but they don't have an interest, it's because they haven't been exposed to it. And so being able to invite those students to a career fair or day where they can get the exposure, it closes the gap. Oftentimes, I'm told at the state level and even at the national level that we have a talent gap. We do not have a talent gap, folks, we just have an exposure gap. Ta-da.
We're trying to be fast.
I know.
It's like an hour and a half long presentation.
So I wanted to add a quick little word in. First of all, I want to share my appreciation and our district's appreciation for all that you do, bringing these wonderful experiences to our district. So some of the things that we've implemented, like UScience and Find Your Grind, which is going to be implemented at the junior high level, and our Career Navigator experiences that we're going to have, which are going to allow us to really embed ourselves in with a lot of these opportunities that you've shown us, have been presented by Montgomery County ESC and our VAC partnership. So, you know, like I said, we're very appreciative for all you do.
Thank you. And again, it's a, it's a privilege and an honor to work, to work with you. If we would ever get state funding, we would provide some of these opportunities for you. But we haven't got that yet.
Here yet.
We can just expose them to you. Okay.
I have a few things that I wrote down. I do like, thank you for giving us this, I do like reading things. I think you guys have done, I have been on the business, I didn't understand the depth of this, so thank you for this, it's been very informative. And just recognizing the importance of career tech and figuring out what are the businesses needing and then responding to that, rather than who's willing to come on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I think that's failure from the past. So it's great to know that you're approaching that differently. You're also working with the bigger groups like AHA and so, rather than just Miami Bad tours or whatever. So, or Dayton Children's. So I was curious if you have very many businesses in Warren County that you have partnered with, are most of them Montgomery County? Or do you have a decent number Warren also?
So for like that Business Advisory Council number that we include on the packet in front of you, like I'll reach out to like, say, like 11 of them, and they'll give me like 40 companies they're working with, so that's in our list. So it's kind of even, an even mixed bag, if you will. But there are, you know, the repeat good actors. I often hear about repeat bad actors, we have a lot of repeat good actors. Who aren't just active in one district, they're active in nine districts. And we try to champion them. So at the annual dinner, where we kind of gave this presentation, two quick examples is QQE, Quality Courts Engineering, they hire high school students to make microchips. Like that's in our backyard, right? Or Yaskawa Motivant, who, you know, I don't have to tell you, you already know. They are so committed to hiring high school students and employing them in our region. So it's a mixed bag, but we're constantly trying to ask the question, who's missing from the table? Can we tag in to this work? We had a Business Advisory Council meeting this morning, one of the things that we shared is we're actually working on, in the Joint Statement of Work that's in front of you, we have a thing called an employer engagement menu. We're actually having so many partners come to the table saying they want to get involved. We're trying to codify what that conversation now looks like. So instead of just saying, well, we'd love for you to come to that career fair, it's, what if we did something like teacher externship, so the whole gamut.
And Lisa, just to kind of dig into that. So up to this point, we've tried to work with as many partners as we can and accept whatever support and willingness they're willing to offer. To be really transparent, it's been a very tough mindset change to shift the thinking from partnership, and I'm going to, I'm going to use a very explicit Spring Grove example, not just writing a check to put a name on a stadium or a commitment to, you know, a scoreboard in some district, you know, here's your $2,000, put my name on the scoreboard, but literally a commitment to their future workforce. And so what we've tried to do is learn over the last five years, what, what do we need in education in order to get them that pipeline? Without saying, you're going to work with third graders and we promise that one of these third graders will one day work for you. Because that clearly is a bad, that's bad luck. So we're, we're working on a more formal, if a business wants to come and work with us- So we're, we're working on a more formal, if a business wants to come and work with us, how do they become the formal partner that gets their name on the back of that list? But, but researching what it is that we really want them to commit to and then what in turn can we give them in return? Because it's not just transaction in the sense of money for name or advertising, but literally an investment in their future workforce.
My only request would be, if I loved being on the Business Advisory Council when I worked in Dayton, now that I work in Cincinnati, I still have a huge passion for this. If you guys could consider having a remote option for when we can't be there in person, I just am wondering if that might open up, like I would definitely be interested.
We, we, we do, they're Zoom, they're hybrid.
So the Industry Subcommittee, which is a funny one, they like very specifically asked.
They only do Zoom.
We want to do Zoom, so they're like, please don't make this covered person, we'll do Zoom, so.
So must be the ones that I was looking into were, because they were definitely in person, I said I need to step away because I can't do that. Okay, well that's great to know.
But the industry one is only on Zoom and the main meetings, which are still welcome to be on as well, there's a hybrid, there's.
Wonderful, okay, okay, that's great to know.
But the one thing that I kind of left out of this presentation that's a nice little action item, is one thing that we've pioneered in 2025 is we are constantly inundated with amazing opportunities for students. It's almost like every other week, there's like an Ohio Business Week or some incredible, you know, summer camp for sophomores in high school or whatever. So we're putting out a monthly Business Advisory Council wrap-up email that has research, school district highlights, videos, upcoming summer camps, any professional development opportunities, anything that's Business Advisory Council adjacent. And we get like six hundred views on these emails, like.
And so Beth, I care, just whoever wants to be on that list, we don't, you don't have to forward it to, you're welcome to forward it to them, but if anybody wants to be on that list, you just automatically get it in your inbox.
But it's new, it's in its infancy, but I really believe it's going to help us share out and then it might kind of light some light bulbs off, hey, have you thought about X because we're doing Y?
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, two-point-two Spring Grove Education Association report, we have someone, wonderful.
Good evening, board members and district administration. I am Emily Hemmerdolph and I teach eighth grade English at SJHS. I'm also the president of the Spring Grove Education Association, which represents three hundred and fifty educators in the Spring Grove District. I am speaking to the community tonight to advocate for our teachers and to ask for your help. The attacks and misinformation being spread on social media about our educators is doing real damage. And I want to highlight for you the harm these posts cause and I'm asking your support in condemning this behavior in the Spring Grove community. First and foremost, these posts are hurtful. Many of our teachers live in this community, their children go to school with your children, they are your neighbors, they are the people you see at the grocery store, the people who sit at the next table at your favorite local restaurant. And they see these hurtful posts. Posting anonymously does nothing to smooth over the hurt. Our educators devote their life's work to supporting your child's future. And how do you think they and their colleagues feel when after reading your posts, they go to school the next day to work with your child? Would you be able to create a positive learning environment after reading such malice? Would you feel a sense of positivity and camaraderie if these comments were hurled around your workplaces? Teachers are always in the public eye, but we didn't sign up to be verbally abused publicly. Much of the information is also incorrect and as a result, dangerous. It can, without merit, distort the reputation of these professionals because the information is based in rumor and not fact. These educators then get labeled as something which they cannot defend against or disprove. This supposition then becomes their scarlet letter, affecting not only their present but also their future, as these reputations are hard to shake. There are times on these threads when the incorrect information gets taken down or deleted, but the damage is already done because those who have seen the posts now believe it as true. And frankly, these posts are counterproductive. Many posts begin with statements like, I'm just trying to get some information here, but then lead down a disparaging path. If you actually have a question about what's happening in your child's school, there are plenty of resources available to find out. The website, newsletters are filled with important information. And if the topic is sensitive, private conversations are a great place to start. But when you don't start there and you go directly to social media, you are showing you don't actually want a solution to the problem, you are instead intentionally stirring up trouble. Many thanks to those community members who defend our educators online, we see you and we know that you're out there too. When you see these attacks, please also condemn your neighbor's activity, tell them that it's hurtful or incorrect or counterproductive. Our teachers can't defend themselves on these platforms, they need your support. And I want to close by saying that I fear that no one is going to want to do this job. Teaching is hard and I don't have to tell anyone in this room that. And it's only made harder when the community you serve paints you as a villain. Who will be drawn to this profession? I fear for the future of who will be educating your children. If you value the excellent education your children are getting in Spring Grove schools, support your teachers and do not denigrate them in online messages. No professional should be expected to tolerate this abuse and then to perform their job at the high level expected here in Spring Grove.
As you know, Facebook is, you know how bad I hate Facebook? And we talk about it often and try to problem solve. And Emily thought that it would be great to speak to the board, which I totally encourage, but I would not allow you to stand here by yourself because I know the work that our whole teaching staff does, I know the work that our custodians do, our food service, our bus drivers. Everybody here works so hard every single day. And I was sharing with a PTO parent how toxic the parent cradle pages in the Spring Grove moms groups are becoming. And she said, and I said, and we waste so much time as principals and administrators addressing the lies and the accusations and just the plain unkind posts and what it does to our staff. It just, it totally takes their motivation away. And it takes a ton of time away from our jobs and our responsibilities to make this school district even stronger than it already is. And she said, hey, I'm going to share with you this analogy. And then she gave me permission to share it with all of you and she sent it in an email and it's just, I think it's spot on and it should be very easy to remember. She said, I believe that you have, that you can use my two bucket analogy and hopefully this will help to assist in the realization that the type of community we need isn't who we are becoming through Facebook. I know that I want my children to be water pourers that don't add to the problem, that are always trying to find solutions to help to resolve situations. She said, in this life, we each carry two buckets with each of us wherever we go. One bucket is filled with water and the other bucket is filled with gasoline. Every day as we carry out our day-to-day tasks, we will come across fires. In that moment, we have to decide what kind of bucket to pour from. Do we want to be water pourers who put out fires or pour from our gasoline bucket and add to the fire, only making the problem bigger? It is our daily bucket choosing that defines us and the type of person we strive to be. So I thought that that was perfect and I implore to our community, before you begin to type behind that keyboard, say, is it water or is it gasoline? Thank you for taking the time to come tonight and to share that. I've seen it, I think most of us have seen it and I agree with you one hundred percent. There is no, I think all of us would agree with you one hundred percent. And you know, it's one of those things that you can say so many positive things about somebody and like, we sat in this room last week for the community meeting and it was, what is some of the best things about Spring Grove? It was you guys, it was teachers that came out as the biggest word. But yet, what you hear is what you see in Facebook and then you can't comment to it. So it doesn't matter that there were nine positive things, that it was that one thing, because you're like, that's not true, that's not. So I just want to speak for myself, probably for the rest of the board also, that we do recognize that and, you know, we're in a peculiar place also as the board. And I think there's things that we can do and I'm committed to this and I have done this in contacting people, I think somebody that I know personally, so that it doesn't get into just a random person, but hey, we need, we need to be better, bottom line, we need to be better Spring Grove. And where we're pouring water and not gasoline on it. So I just want you to know, I appreciate you coming and Carrie supporting her because you're right, this is a hard profession and we need to not lose educators because they're like, I'm not going to deal with this anymore, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. No, I was just going to say too, I really appreciate you coming tonight to share because you're one hundred percent correct. And even one of the posts, Officer Morgan had, love Officer Morgan, she had commented, you know, if you're starting off a post with, I have heard, you shouldn't be posting it. And let's face it, like, I don't understand why people feel the need to take something to Facebook, because that's not the direct chain of command. If there's an issue or a problem, it really should be brought to you. If it's something like in a classroom, talk to the teacher. Because we're partners in this community.
Right.
And not being very, I mean, for the community, some of the people in the community haven't been a great partner. Well, we appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing, it's the only thing I would disagree with. I haven't seen the post because I, no, I.
Your wife has.
Took all, I took all of that off my phone in large part just because of the environmental that you described. It's just not a productive use of my time, quite frankly. But I do appreciate, I can imagine what is posted and I appreciate the, the stress and the impact that that has on our educators. And I would agree wholeheartedly with the others on this, the others and what they've said, just in terms of, I hope you know that you have our support and we join you and wholeheartedly implore our community to be better. So, thank you.
The other for me because I have no clue how to get off these things.
That is true.
But.
Better off for it.
As a coach, yeah, as a coach, you hear stuff too. Thirty-five years, luckily, we didn't have as much at that time, social media than, you know, there's, you got my support big time if I hear something. Other than on Facebook, I'll, I'll deal with it or talk to you.
Thank you. Okay, two-point-three, we have the Spring Grove Classified Employees Association report. Anybody here for that? Nope, okay. Two-point-four, public participat- participation prearrange, I don't believe we have any, okay. Two-point-five, public participation on an agenda item. We have any of that? All right, so we are going to get into the work session three-point-o. Public participation for a work session, same as above. Three-point-two, Tracy Griffin, if you want to go over three-point-two and three-point-three?
Yes, I'd like to, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I bring to you tonight some quotes for our technology. The first quote is for Chromebooks for our Clear Creek building. They are a diary of new, new technology. They were on the replacement cycle last year and we paused on them because we had our big teacher laptop rollout and also Dennis Elementary received Chromebooks. So we paused on, on Clear Creek, but we've got them back on the cycle for this year and we're also looking to go Chrome throughout kindergarten and first grade with touchscreens. Right now, we have some mini iPads in kindergarten and we like to get devices all consistent. That saves time and, you know, with our tech guys, we're working with, you know, one device versus two, so we like to get that all on the same page. And I had our, some of our kindergarten friends trying out some Chromebooks because they do have some touchscreens down there, a small fleet of them, and they were able to manipulate, maneuver them, so they were very good. So I'm happy to get that on the, on books.
Have things just progressed from when we chose to do iPads? Because I think initially we did it because we felt like that's what the littles were ready for.
And you know, the, the technology has enhanced so much since then too and Chromebooks, Chromebook has done a really good job with their, with their touchscreens as well, so. And they're very durable, we looked at a model that's super sturdy for, you know, the kids and that's what we need down there. So I think we'll, we'll do a good job through. So that's our Chromebooks. And then the next two quotes are for Smart Work and Clever Touch. You know, last year we brought two quotes for our Clever Touch boards for our teachers in classrooms and then also Smart for the secondary level. For elementary and secondary, we had some learning spaces that still needed, you know, the big interactive boards. And that's what I'm bringing to you this evening is, is filling those spaces that didn't get on last year's, you know, order. So hopefully to fill those, the spots that still needed that interactive technology.
Awesome, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have three-point-four through three-point-seven with Ms. Tiltree.
Yes. Madam President, members of the board, I bring to you tonight textbook adoptions. I've got some quotes here for, the first one is AP Economics for the fourth edition. It has been, I think, twelve years since we adopted the last book and it's, you know, College Board says that we should try to stay within that ten-year rule. So we would like to adopt the Crugman's Economics and the total amount of that was six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and two cents. And then the second adoption, which is a new adoption, but again, it is time for us to, according to College Board, upgrade our textbooks for the AP World History. And so we would like to adopt Ways the World for AP World History, Modern Course since twelve-hundred and all of the student licenses and teachers additions and test banks to go with it. And I am thinking that this quote probably got left off, but the total amount was on the second page, which is eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. So those are the textbook adoptions.
Is that one just an update to what we currently have, like the same, or did we go with a different company?
That is cool, we are going with a different company, the old company, we had Pearson and this one is BFW. And I think BFW is kind of the new and current textbook publisher of AP textbooks, according to College Board. So we'll start, probably start to see more of these.
Were teachers involved with that selection?
Yes, they, they are the ones who has chosen these. So yes, and they're reviewing them and then we will have a public review then on the AP World History book, since it's a new version. Okay? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Did you go through all?
I did not.
Three-point-seven, okay, keep going.
All right, so our next one is for math, or math, math adoption, okay, for math and reading for our grade six. Usually it's grade six through ten, but then we also have special ed in there too, they use math as well. So the total of that is thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and we use this. This has been just a wonderful resource as far as data, keeping track of growth on our students and such and, and, you know, we've really found a lot of benefits from this. Okay? And then our next one, okay, is Edmentum and we have two quotes. The first one is for our credit deficient students, we formerly had Apex, okay? And Apex is actually turning into Edmentum, okay? Edmentum bought them out and so they are upgrading. So this is for credit deficient students, this would be fifty licenses for one year because we want to try it out, we want to see how it is and such, for eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two fifty. And then our second quote with Edmentum, since we were doing the credit deficient students with that program for curriculum, this would be our curriculum for our alternative program. And this would be eight licenses for twenty thousand dollars and that also includes teacher of record. Okay, so when we have our alternative placement students in that alternative program, this would be the curriculum that they would use. And it's very comparable from what we're told from the Edmentum people to Apex.
So if we needed, I know that you're going off the average of how many seats we usually have, but if we needed ten, can we just buy two more licenses?
We can, we can.
Okay.
And assuming the 50, for the 50 licenses, I mean, that's just what we need for like right now for the credit recovery.
For next year. That's what, I talked to Mr. Myers and that's what he's anticipated for next year, that we would need for different areas. And then, you can roll those over as well.
Okay.
Or you don't use them.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilbert, 3.8 through 3.12.
All right. Madam President, Members of the Board, we bring to you exceeding item 3.8, which is the 25, 26 lunch prices. I think the best thing on this list is the fact that we are now serving breakfast and we have some breakfast prices on there and I can tell you that it's been a very successful program. Kelsey and her staff have done a tremendous job and the good thing too is, is that free stays free and reduced also stays free for the rest of the school year in 25, 26. So, that's a fantastic thing for our students, without question. And also, the reason that I think our students are eating so well is that Kelsey got an outstanding review in her procurement audit, as well as a resource audit and her administrative services audit. And so, that's a compliment to certainly her and her staff. So, we ask that you approve the lunch prices for 25, 26. So, any questions?
My only question was, when I was preparing for this, what do the tiers mean? Like, it's got tier one is 275, tier two is 325, tier three is 375.
There's different combinations for the different lunch periods, for the different lunch types.
Oh, so somebody, you're getting a cheaper lunch if you're getting the tier one, like, you're not getting as many options or something?
Correct. You have different options. Same USDA guidelines, but different options.
Go healthy.
Right, go healthy. And then, item 3.9 is a side effects agreement for athletic marketing. I collaborated with Austin in athletics with regards to this agreement. This provides the opportunity for him to work with them with regards to advertising within the district. They've been very good to us with regards to the percentages they give back to the district that allows us to do things like you see in the athletic hallway with the new emblems that we'll put on. They're looking to get a new graphic as well at the main entry of the athletic entrance as part of the funding that we receive back from side effects for the marketing programming. And they're looking at adding some new things, I think, in the gymnasiums as well. So, they're really working hard, you know, to make sure that, you know, we get appropriate corporate sponsors, as we just talked about a little bit with the workforce, but also making sure that we get our receipts and monies that are needed to continue to improve in our athletic area.
Do you know if side effects is part of our business advisory?
I do not. That's a great question.
I would be very curious for those that we have bigger contracts with, to encourage them to be a part of that.
Yeah, I'll defer. But you know Beth, are they part of the workforce program or the business advisory, side effects?
I don't believe they are.
Okay.
I think they're, like, we just mentioned Watkins, like, our bigger piece, I would love to encourage them to be a part of that because I think Shannon made a good point that it's more than just putting your name on the football field or whatever, but if we can get some collaboration here, maybe we can get some internship-type partnerships and stuff.
Yeah, that's great. And I do know that they definitely hire, you know, Springboro students to work with. So, yeah, so I think it's a great opportunity. So, we'll reach out to Bob and the group, yeah.
One, one question, because it's surprising that they don't already have an agreement in place with that business replacing.
This is, this is just an amendment, yeah, it's just an amendment that we need to continue to renew. So, yeah.
So, that's why I was going to ask, is this just a renewal where the terms are actually the same?
Exactly, yeah.
Exactly the same. Yeah, and we've been working with them for a while, so that's what, just to make sure that there wasn't some substantive changes.
No, good question too. All right. Item 3.10, that's a junior high mechanical unit. We've got a rooftop unit now that actually is, was a heat-only unit that we had two blowers that went down on us and we've got two that probably aren't going to last as much longer. It is an older unit, so finding replacement parts is harder and harder and very expensive to try to get here, as well as even if you can find replacement parts. So, we collaborated with our mechanical contractors, started talking to them about what we could do to put in a new unit. We also wanted to possibly put in some of new features as well, which will be dehumidification for the gymnasium, which will be an advantage, as well as some cooling capabilities, which it's never had. So, that will be a plus. And then, also with this unit, if we ever needed to add to the cooling, we can do so in the future. But it's believed right now that the unit that they're putting in there will first of all give us the heat that we need going into the 25, 26 school year, but it will also provide us a few additional features that the gymnasium has needed for many years. So, it's a, it's a thing that we're going to put on there that will, again, provide greater efficiencies as well for utilities. So, questions? All right. The item 3.11, this is additional asphalt work at Springboro Intermediate. As we started walking the facility, we already had that agreement to go ahead and do the main parking lot because we had some sinky areas that occurred over the winter break. As we started looking at it beyond the fence, as you walk into Wade Field, it really had deteriorated as well through the winter. So, we've got a lot of low spots, we've got a lot of cracking going on with our girls soccer team being state champions and coming back and then our boys soccer team and the programs that compete there now. We wanted to make it a really impressive entry. We didn't want it to be bad and, you know, and then we got a new and then not so new. So, we wanted to blend it. So, we went ahead and got a price from the contractor that's doing the parking lot work and I thought he came in at a very competitive price in order to do that work. He'll be doing that probably the second week of June and I've worked with Austin with regards to athletic schedules to get that accomplished. So, that's the additional work that's going to be done at Springboro Intermediate. Any questions?
And the question is, you added it, but it still is within your budget area, you're just prioritizing it differently?
Correct, yes.
Okay, no other questions?
All right. And then, the next one, 3.12, is asphalt work at the junior high. This has been needed for quite a few years and we've been looking at it. It's quite a costly project, but what we did is, from the entry off 741, right now, you'll see a lot of running on the sides of that roadway. So, we are actually, as part of this project, going to expand the asphalt a little bit wider so that we don't have as much running that comes across the side. So, it will come out a little bit to where Miracle Field entry is. If you know where Miracle Field enters, it's going to be almost kind of equitable to that entry point on that side and then on the other side, it'd be probably about a foot, a foot and a half wider. So, that will be a plus, I think, for traffic coming in and out. Plus, it's really eroded, it deteriorated pretty badly and we've had quite a few potholes that we've had to, you know, fill in through that process, yeah. So, we wanted to make sure that we got this work done coming into the summer. And then, it's going to extend out and then around by the tennis courts and then we'll also do the three island area, which is parking. So, it will be new asphalt as well as new striping in those areas, new directional striping as well. And it will make it all look new and it will blend with what we've already done at the junior high. And the positives of it too is that, you know, again, it's going to blend in with, I think, what we're trying to do here within the district infrastructure. So, we'll be having a few other layhard escapes that we need to do and complete, but this will be a real positive for the junior high area. So, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 3.13, we, do we have any committee reports? 3.14, discussion of any other businesses required? No? Okay, next we have 4.0, Mrs. Stacy with the Treasury Report.
Yes, so we have a few items tonight. Item 4.1 is the March financials. And in the month of March, we brought in about $9.2 million in revenue. Of that, 7.6 was our tax assistance, 1.3 million was state funding and about $347,000 in miscellaneous revenue for our excess costs for foster placed children, tuition, interest and school fees. Currently, we are running slightly ahead of our estimates through March, so that's a good thing, but they're coming in very close. And then, on the expense side, we spent just under $5.6 million. We are running under budget in every category slightly. So, that's a good, you know, under budget in our expenses and over, exceeding our revenues. So, we're doing really good. Through March of this year, we spent 73.96% of our budget. Last year, at the same time, we spent 74%. So, we're right on target with where we would expect to be spending. We do have our purchase order cutoffs that occurred April 11th for our general fund and May 2nd for all other funds. And currently, we have 4.6 million in outstanding purchase orders, so we have lots of purchases that we're going to be paying for and closing out as we work towards the end of the year. And then, through March, we have 100 days of operating cash on hand and we're anticipating closing the fiscal year at about 73. So, everything is looking really good for financials. And then, my next item is 4.2, approval of the FY '25 Permanent Appropriations Amendment. We have to do at least one amendment during the year and then I'll bring the finals for you in June. Only a few changes to some of the funds. I've increased the appropriations for our food service fund, PI fund and some of our grant funds. We did get additional allocations for, so I did increase the appropriations for that. And as long as we have the cash to support increasing appropriations, then I can do that. And so, I've done that and that's what's part of this appropriation amendment. And then, we have to vote on those two separately.
Okay, so can I have a motion for the approval of items 4.1 and 4.2?
Seven seconds.
Vote call. Okay, any questions? Sorry.
Um, Beth?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Stuki?
Epstein.
Okay. And then, I've got a bunch of other ones here. So, item 4.4 is the approval of the five-year financing for the high school stadium lighting project. You guys did approve that in January 29th, I believe. This will be a five-year financing for $255,000. I have a not-to-exceed 5.5% interest rate. Typically, I have the exact quote when I come to you, but with the volatility in the markets, they're not giving quotes, so I have to wait till you approve it to get locked in. But it will come in under 5.5, I'm thinking probably around 5%, but I won't have that number until after the approval. And that's similar to 5, 4.5, the approval of the three-year, 36-month financing for the door access control project. And I did send you that sheet from Scott that kind of explained what all of his projects were for this financing, similar to that. This will also be, this will be a three-year, 36-month financing and it will still be under that 5.5%. I'm thinking probably about 4.9, but again, I won't know until we lock it in. And then, 4.6 is the approval of the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission. That needs to get to the county auditor based on. Item 4.7 is approval of a donation for $2,000 for STEM Fest. You will also notice that 2,000, 1,000 is from the board budget initiatives that you guys approved at the last meeting verbally and we need to add that on there. Item 4.8 is the approval of a donation of $100 from Scott Pitt to the Springboro High School Musical Department. Item 4.9 is approval of donation for $50 from Stephen Peeters to the Wayne Temper Scholarship Fund. Item 4.10 is the approval of the COG substitute teacher rate for next year. It is the same as this year. I did an analysis quickly and we're still very competitive. We have the highest school rate in the COG and most of the districts are around $125. We're 130, so we're competitive. And then, item 4.11 is the approval of a donation of $1,000 from the Military Order of the Purple Heart to be used for the Rossing Program.
Awesome. Any questions? Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of items 4.4 through 4.11?
Seven seconds.
Vote call.
Beth?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have 5.0 is the Superintendent Report.
Yes, our partnership with the city of Springboro continues to strengthen and that allows us to collaborate in some creative and positive ways. And the city understands our commitment to student-staff safety and has worked with us to come up with reasonable terms to add an additional SRO for the next school year. So, if you all approve this evening, this will show that you all are committed as the administration is committed to prioritize staff and student safety with the additional resource officer support.
Can you share with us how the three would be used throughout the district?
They're supposed to say what the SRO does so that they can, they're supposed to be, whether strategically-
Predictably unpredictable or something to that effect. They don't want to assign SROs to a specific spot because if you know SRO stands in the all right here, then that's where the SRO is. So, SRO Huesman does a great job circulating our district properties within the building and making sure he's present in each of them without having a routine or a pattern of where he's about, per the expectation of the chief.
Interesting, I didn't know that. Okay.
Predictably.
Predictably unpredictable.
That may not be exactly.
Not predictable.
And that was stay predictable.
And just a really quick one on this, this is not an addition to the budget because we're using attrition from some retirees and some who move new things around. So, this will be an addition to the budget.
Awesome. I think anything we can do to increase the security and safety, that's another thing we heard from the community, how important that is. So, I appreciate you getting creative. It's not costing us more, but additional manpower. So, can I get a motion for the approval of the SRO contract?
Seven seconds.
Any questions?
Um, Beth?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next we have Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Tudor.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board. I've come before you tonight to seek approval for our personnel report. This one is loaded not only with updated teacher contracts, but we have some pretty tenured teachers who are retiring. One, of course, is Ms. Dolver.
I was hoping we were invited.
Would join me up here.
You wouldn't mind Ms. Dolver, would you?
Retire. When stu-, she's been with the district for 24 years approximately. I will tell you that when students return next school year in August, her absence is going to be the, she's not afraid to do the work, so she'll roll up her sleeves and do whatever it takes for the benefit of the students. You know, I know you and I have a great relationship and enjoy the banter, but the truth and reality is, the kids at Springboro High School are going to miss you dearly in retirement and it is very much so. So, thank you so much. You're welcome.
What you don't, what you don't know-
That was so unexpected.
What you don't know, Matt, was that she was also hired just to make Benjamin and my life miserable.
I'm guessing you were successful.
That was a perk.
Also, Mr. Hanson here at the high school, been in here for 24 years. We're certainly going to miss him. And then, Ms. Robbie Downe, a third grade teacher, she's been with the district for 27 years. We're glad to see that she's able to go out in retirement as well. I know she's an incredible teacher down there as well. And then, the new hires, you guys are going to start to see trickle in here. Our building principals have done a great job leading those processes. On the report today, we have three Springboro graduates that we're proud of bringing. I know that Mr. Bolton, Ms. Davies and Ms. Paulman are all Springboro graduates, so it's always nice when they come back and serve the community. They poured so much into them.
Yeah, awesome. All right, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
Seven.
Any questions or comments?
Just congratulations to all retirees at 8 o'clock. And how are we doing? Are we looking like pretty on track for new hires?
Yep, we expect all positions to be filled when students come back. I know Sarah and her team have done a great job with related services. That was something we definitely prioritized. We posted in mid-February, it gave our administrative team a chance to get out and really recruit top talent into our district. I will tell you too, the brand of Springboro sells so well. It's, you know, there's obviously, as you know, a teacher shortage. We get less of that because it's such a strong community that does value education.
That's awesome. And I just want to comment, because I didn't even see Mrs. Dolver back there, but I had already written her name down just to comment on. She just, you have such a reputation here in such an amazing way, in such an amazing way. I followed up with that. Truly, you just impact, the way that you teach and you approach kids' learning is just amazing. So, you, I'm just looking at the high school, you and Mr. Hanson are both those teachers that my kids still talk about. So, I just want to thank you. And maybe you can do like Mrs. Lu's did and you can come back.
She's given us up for us.
Yay, okay, that's awesome.
She's in the process of renewing her teaching license. Background check is valid and up to date.
That's wonderful.
I thought she was getting her CDL.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just would echo what everybody said. I know my family, my kids in particular, have really enjoyed having you and just thank you for all your commitment to the district. I'm glad to hear that maybe you're not going to be a stranger. Thank you.
Yep, roll call.
Um, Beth?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then, person, or excuse me, the athletic board, a couple things on here for track to clear up and then our varsity boys golf coach. We're excited to bring him on as a volunteer so that he can work through some of the off-season programs.
Awesome. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the athletic report?
Um-
Second.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.
All right, and then, or excuse me, the athletic report. Couple things on here for track to clear up, and then our varsity boys golf coach. We're excited to bring him on as a volunteer so that he can work through some of that offseason programs.
Awesome. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the athletic report?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.
Okay, 8.0, we have Mrs. Poultry with 8.1 through 8.4.
Right, Madam President, members of the board, I'm seeking approval for AP economics textbooks, AP world history textbooks, math for six through 12, ed mentum for credit deficient students, and ed mentum for our alternative program.
Awesome. Okay, 8.5, can I get a motion for the approval of items 8.1 through 8.4?
So moved.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 9.0, we have Mrs. Gerson. Is she here?
I'm here.
Yeah, couldn't see you, sorry.
I'm being really upset.
And we've got 9.1.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. I have a couple contracts. Before I tell you about those, I do want to just highlight from the personnel report because I'm so excited. There are two school psychologists and two speech pathologists, which we're very excited to have secured, one as recently as 20, less than 24 hours ago. So, I've not even notified our SLP team. I know they're gonna be thrilled. So, I know he mentioned related services, but I cannot tell you how challenging it has been to secure those, so we're really excited to do that. Contracts on the agenda, two are for just some home instruction summer services. The OTPT is summer evaluation team for preschool. That's a annual thing. The other two for ABS are for next school year. We are starting to get contracts rolling in for 25, 26 for student placements. Those are continuing existing placements that are already in place that will just continue. Expect over May and June to see more of those rolling in as we get those contracts.
Okay, awesome. Can I get a motion for the approval of student service and private placement contracts?
So, sorry.
Any questions? Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 10.0, we have Mr. Gilbert, and if you want to go through 10.1 through 10.5.
Yes, Madam President, member of the board. We're asking for approval this evening of item 10.1. Item 10.1, lunch prices for 25, 26. 10.2, the side effects agreement for athletic marketing. 10.3, the purchase of a junior high mechanical unit. 10.4, the asphalt work at Springbrough Intermediate, and 10.5, the asphalt work at Springbrough Junior High. And just to add about the asphalt work, we are going with a little different contractor for those. He was very aggressive and eager, and he's doing both of the projects, both the junior high as well as the intermediate school. So, that's a positive.
But it's still being done off school season?
Yes, correct. Yes, off school season.
Great. Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of items 10.1 through 10.5?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations. We are going to start with 11.1. The, am I doing this for you?
Yeah.
Okay. The approval to rescind Board Policy 2261.04 and the accompanying resolution and to direct our superintendent to sign the certification to the U.S. Department of Education. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I do have a statement that I, and I'm being very careful because of the legal ramifications here, so this is, I'm gonna read it rather than just speak it. So, personally, I am supporting the endorsement of the certification because of the impact that it can have on our community if we choose not to sign it. Our district did not seek this out. It showed up at our doorstep and had consequences to the tune of 1.5 to 4.5 million dollars being removed from our budget if our federal funding was cut. It is my fiduciary responsibility to protect the board and the funding in our district. Regardless of thoughts on all of this, I want the community to know we are committed to serve our community with fidelity, honesty, transparency, to the best of our ability as we have for years, because that's what we do in Springbrough. So, I just wanted to state that, that there's a lot happening politically that districts are having to respond to. We are committed to doing what we've been doing. Anything else before we vote?
Well done.
I'll be less careful politically or legally. I just want to share, like, I, this is a decision that I took lately. Can't speak for others, but something that I wrestle with. Fortunately, I think we're dealing with the people that, in my opinion, are acting in bad faith. The irony is not lost on me that, you know, the same people who will espouse local control want to sort of use the threat of federal funding to remove policies that take the highly controversial stance of, you know, statements like providing a safe school and community environment for all learners, listening to all the voices in the community, and building on the strengths and differences of individual backgrounds, beliefs, and experiences. Horror, if I had pearls, I would clutch them. The timing of this really hasn't allowed for a robust discussion on this, but I hope that our students and our staff know that it's not the end of the conversation, and, you know, tonight's action certainly doesn't change the values, in my opinion, of this board or the administration, and are committed to, you know, to creating an environment in this district that supports all of our learners.
Thank you for sharing, Jamie. Anything else? One thing that I do feel confident in making this decision, and that is in our leadership here in Springbrough, because I know that we're always gonna be committed to doing what is best for all of our kids, no matter where they're at. And I appreciate, I just want to take a minute to thank you for that. Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any other public or future considerations or announcements from you all? No. All right, Sarah.
I just want to express thanks for Mrs. Cox and Mr. Stewart for coming tonight to share the business advisory council work. I think that's such a great shared resource for our students and also for our communities. Also, I'd like to thank all the volunteers and the organizations who participated in our STEM Fest. I wasn't able to have my own table like I did last year, but I really enjoyed visiting the different tables, and I loved seeing our kids with, you know, all the dissections and talking to the other kids stopping by. I'm like, oh, that's cool. And like, some of the parents are like, eh, but it was great. And I also really appreciate too, all of the art teachers and putting our students' artwork on display. It was, I mean, so, like, we have really incredibly talented students, definitely incredible teachers and staff as well. And so, and all the work that went into the musical. And I appreciate, again, thank you for coming tonight to speak because our community should and do better, should and could do better. So, thank you for that. And thank you for the donations, too.
I want to thank everybody for the donations. We already kind of talked about it, but social media has become the enemy of many communities, and it seems that Springbrough, it's, you know, it revers its ugly head quite often, but we all told you that as this board, you have our, excuse me, you have our backing and support. So, thanks for the business advisory that came in. I didn't realize she had, it's the same lady that was at Jonathan Wright, brought it to an end, but still, it's pretty neat how far she's advanced. Glad we were able to help everybody that had presented stuff for us tonight. There was a lot accomplished, and that's it.
Okay, to reflect a little bit back on what Jamie had shared earlier, this was a rough, there were things through here that we really grappled with this week, really, really difficult. And I just want to appreciate the board for doing what we are elected to do and not just making easy decisions without really digging into things. It feels good to have that camaraderie, even if we're not fully in agreement with something, but to work through it together. At the end of the day, to make sure that we're doing what's best for our community, for the kids that we serve, for our staff. And you guys don't speak very often, so it really communicates a lot that it's gotten to the point where you're like, we need to have a voice here. And I appreciate that you've got Mrs. Hester's backing in that. And I think it's a challenge to all of us when we see things, if there is something that we can do to help communicate the impact that's having to do that. So, thank you for taking the time and sharing what you're hearing from teachers and staff, the impact that it's having when somebody has a bad day with something, and rather than dealing with it in the right way, goes to social media. The last thing was just STEM Fest. Lots of teachers here that were involved, and it was just so neat. The person who does my nails, I had invited her, and she, it was just a few days after STEM Fest, and she was like, oh, my goodness, it was so amazing. My husband brought my boys, and they absolutely loved it. I said, see, I wouldn't set you in the wrong direction. And it was just so neat, like, she had never, she didn't even know about this. And to see the wide variety of things that were brought in, it was just really neat to see kids get so excited about this. So, thanks to Lynn for heading that up another year, but also for all the support with staff and Beth and just people that helped out with that. So, that's all that I've got.
I'll come in to do it in next year.
I think we might have one more year with her.
Oh, really?
I think so. Okay, we've got 12.1. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Bab?
Yes.
Palaj?
Yes.
Slayhop?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.